I'd like to call to order the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education meeting on September 16, 2024 at 6:30 PM. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public, but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular meetings that require action by the board. The documents named for those discussed at previous meetings are presented to the board for discussion and review. It's time, please, turn on the silence. Tom, Tom and Dan, so I'll take it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'm going to read our mission, its learning knowledge and statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the indigenous people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the indigenous people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation in a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since standing in the world and whose land on which the second arch of the Ondio tribe has resided and was continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the long-standing history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Our next act is for me to read the headings of our educational governance agreements. If you'd like the full version itself, they can read it. But as board members, we are committed to the following: professionalism and respect and equity, inclusive collaboration, responsibility to a forward-looking vision, dedication to community initiatives, and a commitment to continuous growth. We do our local.
Can you read here?
Jane, I want you.
Ms. Isaac, mom, can you hear?
Can we bounce here?
Ethan Johnson, here.
Okay, everybody. We've got to approve our agenda. I have the motion to approve our agenda.
So I'll move.
And you, Faithful?
Aye.
And your votes? And then we'll just go to superintendent report for today.
Good evening, everyone. The first slide I have under my report this evening is our much anticipated by Plata copy. Also, I'd like to introduce to you Chris, Iceborne, Molegas, and Dan Travis and the Pissnap. And they're going to walk the road and explain the things that have been happening in our district and what's yet to come. So I don't know if it's more or less, but thank you both for being here.
Chris is in the part of the park.
You do the prep part, right?
All right, so we started with the impact on summer of 22. That consisted of the noseless, nose push elementary roof, pantry elementary roof, the high school baseball field, parking lot, and new sidewalk. High school athletics storage building addition, and then the desert building site based on that side. This slide, you can see, so at pantry, left-hand side, we replaced the slate roof. There, in the middle, that's the membrane roof, replaced with a pantry. On the right-hand side, there's the membrane roof. Here we've got the high school baseball field, the new entrance, parking lot, the sidewalks. This slide shows the high school athletics storage building addition. The top picture is the completed addition. And the bottom there is very conservative. Then we went on to, back to summer of '23, because when that began, wrapping the original projects up for summer. We started with pantry elementary school cafeteria addition, electrical service and MVP improvements, the boiler and pump replacement, the campfire equipment upgrades, and installation of the chiller. And then over to the middle school, we did, we completed a weight room addition, kitchen cafeteria renovations, the boiler and pump replacement, campfire equipment upgrades, and then also still installed the chiller. And then at the high school, here at the high school, we completed another weight room addition, track resurfacing, and auditorium flooring in the library. On this slide, you can see left-hand side, left-hand side of exterior, the addition over pantry. And the interior is a brick. And pantry elementary school, our electrical and mechanical system improvements, the new dumpster enclosure, storage room. We did the left picture on the left. We did the new AC chiller, the AC enclosure, which is down the middle. And you can also see how big the chiller is in the upper picture. And then a new trace former, which is down left. And then the MVP tail, which is out of right picture. And then the classroom unit. And then we'll move back to the middle school weight room addition. That's addition to the areas. We've got here individual offices, the storage room, and then opposite weight room additions. And this one was also a large undertaking, middle school parking lot, it must have been here drop-off requirements. And middle school, we also completed cafeteria renovations. And then to the electrical and mechanical system improvements. And so some new AC showers, both monsters are still above the roof. There's two of them, same picture, down left, filter, multi-sides. And then there's new boilers and pumps, new rooftop units, new air handling units, new classroom unit, facilitate the head cooling, and new electrical service, transfer.
I'll just point out for Chris, the picture on the lower, left side there with the unit being lifted to the crane. It's pretty unbelievable how large those units are and to get up, almost six feet, a huge.
And then we'll move on to the high school weight room addition. We completed the high school front for lighting, flooring, volume replacement. Flooring complete, lighting replacements, about 85% of the area from, so it's a startup. High school track, that's resurfaced. Impact three, so we started these projects this summer. Over. Some of the, a couple of these projects are actually, were contractors just working on, second shift. And so we need that through layer, as we move back to summer of '25. Plus, the high school boiler and pump replacement, hot water heater replacement, fire alarm panel replacement, temperature controls are being replaced. And then over in small engine room, there's insulation there. And then at the auto lab, we replaced the vehicle exhaust system. And the wire, we're doing electrical service upgrades, facilitate the campfire equipment. I would say the campfire equipment upgrades, and then installation of the chiller. And Poland Elementary, we've got really a choir, we're launching service upgrades, campfire equipment upgrades, and installation of each other. And then Vols, that was completed this summer, because the parking lot became a starting. And we also were able to replace some slant areas and have the sidewalks. So everything that was completed at the high school this year is the fire alarm panel, the boilers, pumps, hot water heater, and new temperature controls is underway. That's actually the point in undertaking itself, which would be one of the aspects of your, one of the projects is going to be going through later. High school small engine renovations, auto lab, so the top right picture, that's the auto lab, exhaust fan, and most of them. And other three pictures, small engine room, we're doing new overhead point of the door, joint bolt, shaft areas, and we removed the storage room wall, to add additional shaft space. And then associated mechanical and electrical upgrades. Wire, electrical and mechanical system improvements, so it's completed in summer of '24. Chillicofer painting, and Masonry in those, chill water piping, was installed above ceilings. Painting, replacement of blockers, window shade replacements, and electrical upgrades. Now for, it's been completed next summer, is the classroom unit events, installation of the air handling unit for chiller, new rooftop units, associated renovation, interior renovations. That case work, case working electrical, and then, oh, August, and then electrical transfer. And then Poland, what we completed this year was chillicofer painting, chill water piping, with the stove above the roof. And we're also some, like in the frame of the ceiling. Window shade replacements will be completed here. Electrical upgrades that started, and we can make some of that summer. Also, the classroom unit events, rooftop units, and associated interior renovations. So ceiling replacement, space work, floor painting, and the electrical transfer. And here is Vols Elementary School parking lot, we said the same thing was needed. And then Impact four, which we're targeting to get this, the, the leads, remember, that came with her. That's in the, I guess, work, sometime this summer, this summer. But this will be for summer, for starting in '25, and addition in '26. Back, it consists of Dean Elementary School, electrical upgrades, campfire upgrades, chiller installation, and slant interior revision. And back over Vols Elementary, also, you know, same thing there, electrical upgrades, campfire equipment upgrades, chiller installation, interior revision for long. And then high school here, will be replacing asphalt shank. And then we've got some new service upgrades, combined, we did connect cord. And that's some new service and mechanic. At the high school, middle school, old elementary, Vols Elementary, and then associated electrical upgrades. Over to everyone.
Thank you for the overview, Chris. I'll just say, so you can see by looking at the individual bidets, with, over the course of six years, all of our buildings will have chiller installed, the ability to heat and cool the air. All the infrastructure will be updated, so it's not something that looks flashy like an addition to a building, but it's been amazing and all of work. Chris is talking about the work on the roof and in the ceilings, depending on the structure of the buildings and when they were built, they had to do different things to make sure that more people, air could travel through the building. So it's been an engineering feat, I would say, to retrofit these buildings, which is a great idea.
And Jennifer, Josh, and Ginger, and now Jill, think of this in your experience. And we're ready for that, because it gives us direction, because that's going, so.
Do you have some questions in the moment? I have a picture, as this is such a set of projects. I wonder if you could tell us a little bit of forecasting, move budget, right? And how are you getting into systems? If you're forecasting pensions, staffing, I mean, right, all these, as we get into the, the new to public projects. Tell us a little bit about the details.
Well, I just want to back up, because like, when we did the plan for this month, that was kind of re-inflation. And the district had done prioritization, and what was the most important. Luckily, there was a good amount of funding that the district had available. Then all of a sudden, lots of money passing inflation. And so, those first couple of projects, we really were kind of learning what was reality from across it. And we said we grew, was good, about continuing to save, got air conditioning. But maybe some of these other things are less important. So that became our mantra, is to make sure we have that, to do most of our things, and to have it most seriously. So I think when we get through this corrective package four, that the thought around the table is that at that point, we can kind of value bring deeper in that, perhaps have some money left to go to things, and go through prioritization. Just for the, for Josh, ready for the hat?
Yeah, we, this was very important. This is very cool.
The second part is troubling, or you foresee the easy job of what's?
We're still in Michigan, still having trouble finding steel trains to do a lot of work. So that was some of the other reasons, to kind of, you guys see this pattern of a lot of the wire. And then the, and the file is smaller pieces that, you know, that the trace cameras have access to. So that, we probably could have designed it all once. It hasn't changed, so we're doing that process issue. So this is a new strategy that we're aware of.
Yeah, especially with the damage that has been to that track. Obviously, we don't want to send any of the barriers into the.
Go ahead. I have a couple of comments, and then a series of questions, then a question. The first is, I guess it's a word, the pantry cafeteria, beautiful with all of that natural light that comes in, just really put the place up, and so I'm happy about that. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to tour the electrical and mechanical systems, but it made it just as glorious, so. Be transparent about that. My question was about those semi-sized rooftop.
The chillers.
Chillers, yes. And for me, this question is kind of not in your real house, but I'm just wondering, oftentimes we have like leather drills, and if there's something of that magnitude on the roof, does that impact like our real emergency response? Did it change it? Did it not impact it? Or example, when students are seeking shelter in the school, and those things are, like above us, for example, like tornado drills.
So the other thing I had to put those there is reinforce the steel. So there's, there's quite a new steel that's, that's old. So there's, there's not added hazard from those, they're safety in time. Is that why you're kind of asking for it?
Yeah, just the student safety issue, for example, if there's a tornado drill, and they go out on the hallway, and those things are above us, they're, okay.
They're not, they're actually below, whatever we can.
Okay, so no change to the, for, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you do some of that.
I think that's one really important part, all the work they handed on, to be able to put those there, right? Not only at the middle school, but also pantry, or, McGuire, you didn't put on the roof of pantry right there.
Yeah, great.
Okay, and McGuire had to have kind of that reinforcement that Dan's talking about, so that the broken support thing, that's better. So I just keep saying, this is not like putting air conditioning in our homes, right? Every classroom has changes, our classroom has, new piecework has to go in, because the new vent that goes in is different size than the vent that's there. And so it's, it's really, it's a huge project, every person.
I just want to say, and we all want to say thank you for all of us, and you spoke of this is, you know, amazing. And I just think, oh, the district is so good about kind of forward thinking about things, that, you know, some other districts have a sort of, things are falling apart other places, and so it's just good to see. And also, I know everyone has kind of their favorite project, but I've got lots of compliments off the signs, just that consistency, and then also the track, referred up multiple times. But, you know, people feel excited to have, you know, other teams come, and just a point of pride. As for all of these things, but just from the community, kind of hearing, you know, feedback on different things. And the drop-up at the middle school, that solved a real problem. And so not just for our district, but the community people that lived over there. So just thank you for this report, and just also all of the hard work. I can't imagine not making all the distance.
I've got two questions on slide seventeen. The new temperature controls, will those be, can those be done early? Do you be able to change the temperature early?
So, yeah, most temperature control systems are web-based. So I don't know if Josh, if you've got that, got it or not, but, but yeah, you should be able to get access to them.
And where is that room compared to where we are right now?
This room.
That room is on, I'm just trying to envision how deep that is.
Down there.
It's down there, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's down sort of where the old building and the new building, you know. Well, thank you all very much, I appreciate it, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And it's perfect, everyone, to move right as we are at our presentation, which is our technology annual report. Because the second part of our own projects, of course, is heavily invested in technology. So Joel's been right along with us, with Chris and Dan and Josh and the rest of us, averaging weeks meeting, not only Joel, but with our consultants from Community, you should write that as well. So it's true.
Good evening. All right, want to give you a little bit of overview of what we've done the last year, and how busy we've been. The first slide shows you our current staff. You can see we are a very veteran staff, with our rookie being here for 22 years. Starting my 10th year at Mount Pleasant, which is crazy how fast that's gone, my 29th overall in education. Melinda Sims there, Kell Ward, both 27 and 25 years respectively. So we have a, we have a great staff, hardworking, they're very knowledgeable. So I really appreciate having them, having them with me. Next slide will talk about Chromebooks, which seems to be where we spend a lot of our time right now. So you see, we are currently managing a fleet of over 6,000 active Chromebooks in the desert. One-to-one projects at high school, the middle school, and Oasis. Every teacher is given a Chromebook to take home and use at school. We have received tons of positive feedback from the community about the one-to-one Chromebooks, and how much beneficial they have been to students, and having the ability to have a device to work from home. In the elementary end, we have a cart in every classroom, thirty Chromebooks in every classroom, that the teachers can use as, as they do. A lot of the online testing assessments stuff is all done on Chromebooks now. So they are, they are used constantly. I'm sure if you've seen, you've walked around the buildings, their Chromebooks are being used all the time. We handle all of the setup, the maintenance, and the repairs in-house. So I have really one person who prepares all of these Chromebooks, and you'll see a little bit later in the numbers, it's, it's a significant amount of repairs that it takes to keep everything running. We have an office here at the high school, where we kind of centralize our program, where we do all of our repairs, we do all of the setups, and everything are all done right here, and then we just redistribute them around the district as we go. A little more on the one-to-one program, because every middle school, high school, Oasis student that wishes to have one is provided a Chromebook, and they have one for their duration of time at Mount Pleasant schools. We use a program called GoGuardian, which is our filtering software, and that follows the students not only out of the school, but at home, even on their personal computer, if they're logged into their school Google account, they will have the GoGuardian restrictions that we have here at the school. This will be the first year they're going to start cycling the Chromebooks. So this year, the incoming eighth graders to the high school, within the next few weeks here, will be getting a replacement Chromebook. We'll take their old ones back, we'll have time to clean them, get them ready, and then they will be cycled back into the lower grades as we go. Things that we've learned, damage rates have come down this year. I think these kids are figuring out how easily they can be broken, and how to take care of them a little bit. You can see the number of repairs, last year we had 220 Chromebooks repaired at the high school, and 377 at the middle school. And almost 80% of those repairs are broken screens, that seems to be the number one issue. So we're encouraging students to carry them in their bags, which doesn't happen a lot. They carry them loose, and they get dropped, and they get banged around. And we are switching to a new style bag this year. It's a heavier bag, a more. It's a heavier bag, a more padded bag and it doesn't fit all their other stuff in it. Because that seems to be an issue too. They had those Chromebook bags that they just crammed, it's a candle backpack, they crammed everything into their Chromebook bag and things got broken and it's switched. We've had some great stories. As you can imagine, some of the kids that come in, we've had several Chromebooks run over by cars. We've had them show up at pawn shops, yard sales. Some of the stuff is pretty unbelievable. They've traveled all over the country, they've been shipped back from Florida. It's pretty amazing. I'm going to talk to you a couple of the software platforms that we implemented this last year. Final forms, I know you've heard a little bit about this. It's our online student registration and documentation collection program. It allows parents to fill out all of the required academic and athletic forms online. And what's really nice about this is number one, all their information carries over from year to year. So next year, you won't have to go fill this all out again, you just go review, make any changes and re-sign the second year. And that, that shows our participation rates. Our rates were okay the first year, but this year they have really gone, gone up with the number of parents that are participating. Where right now, we have a couple of schools, preschool is actually over ninety-seven percent participation of parents at home. And at Ganyar, it's a hundred percent this year, every parent is going to fill out paperwork, which is awesome. It's nice about Final Forms is it updates Power School immediately. If a parent makes a change, we can go in, hit a button and all that change information goes right into Power School. It's updated in real time. So that's nice to get emergency contact information, things like that, keep it updated as we go. That's been, that's been a really nice piece of Final Forms. Thrill Share is another piece of software we're using. That's our information distribution system. It lets our building administrators send out calls and texts and emails to families. These are the snow day type calls and the informational type calls that you receive. It also allows them to take that same information and push it out to their social media at the same time so they can take that same information that they're sending out, push it out to Facebook, whatever they want to use. And that helps it get that information out quickly and accurately. And that receives nightly updates from Power School. If a new student moves into the district, they sign them in, they get their information. That nightly information will go into Pop In, to Thrill Share and the next morning they would be on snow day call. If one were to happen, that's all done, that's all done automatically. I'm really happy with Thrill Share system and we're starting to get more and more of the building administrators using it on a regular basis and it's been very helpful. So to move on to, this was the big one of our bottom projects this last year, was the large venue AV updates. Starting at the middle school, we installed projectors and new audio systems in both the gymnasiums. Very, very successful installation, they're working great. At the high school, we replaced the entire system, including speakers. And Jason McIntyre referred to it as being at a concert. He really, he really likes the sound that's kicked out and these are all controlled by touchscreens, within closets. They update, adjust volume and do things like that and that's worked out really, really well. At Ganyar Elementary, we put a new projector in the gymnasium and a new audio system in the gymnasium and the cafeteria. These are all wireless mic, Bluetooth enabled, they can hook their phone up, play music, anything they want with their, with their sound systems in their building. Paulin Elementary, we just did the gymnasium because the cafeteria had been done last year and part of another project. So they got a new projector and audio system in the gymnasium. Vowles Elementary received a new projector in the gym and a new audio system in both the cafeteria and the gymnasium. Fancher Elementary received a new projector and audio system in the gymnasium and new projector and audio in the cafeteria, the new cafeteria addition that gets used a lot and that seemed to be a very successful, successful project there. And then McGuire Elementary received a new projector and audio system in the gym and a new audio system in the cafeteria. I had sent out, as we were getting ready for this, to see, I sent out to the gym teachers and say, let me tell the board about what you think and how you're using this and you can see, Steve Holfer, who's the gym teacher at Ganyar and Vowles, said the recent addition of the projector and sound system has benefited the students. We're using the projector to add dynamic content for warm-ups, activities and skill development. Students have responded positively to a system that gives them the opportunity to learn new ways for PE outside of teacher-led instruction. In the short period of time we've had this system, we've been able to use a projector for new warm-up activities, videos promote our Kids' Heart Challenge fundraiser and exciting content to boost interest in new sports activities. New sound system has been more efficient when hosting assemblies and the staff have enjoyed the ease of use. I don't know if any of you have been through an elementary building when the gym teacher is using it, but they do some really cool things with the video and the audio in the gyms and it's dancing around and the gym teacher's got his phone in his pocket to control the music, so if it's quiet, he can stop the music and it's worked out really cool. We've been really, really happy with how that's gone. Another bottom funded project was the elementary PAA bell systems. All five elementaries received new IP-based PAA systems, indoor and outdoor. And what's nice about that IP-based system is that it allows individual control. If you need a quieter speaker in one room, you can control that individually. If it needs to be louder in the gymnasiums and cafeterias, it's all adjustable per room. And that's worked out really well. They use their morning music and songs, they can put in songs for bells, customize alerts, party games, things like that and that's, that's worked out really good. One of the other projects, this was funded through a state of mission and safety grant, where we updated, we updated all of the handheld emergency radios in every building. Total two hundred and seventy-five radios. That wrapped up at the end of the summer and they're using them and they seem to be working well and also happy with how that turned out. Using bottom funds, we did some network infrastructure updates. We updated the main switches, the kind of four switches that run the district and so that improved speed and improved security and it makes our ease of use a lot, a lot better, a lot easier to work with. And then using bottom funds, we also started the process of updating our classroom audio/video with interactive displays. It doesn't seem like it just happened, or it seems like it just happened, but we are in year six of, six of the projectors that we installed as part of the last bottom project and it's just, it's time to start now cycling that out and redoing the classrooms. What's coming up next is we're going to continue these AV upgrades on a little bit larger scale. We've been doing it on small kind of test projects to see how we like it and how it's working. And now we want to look at moving that to a little bit larger scale over the next year to get these replaced. We want to continue to work on the success of the one-to-one program and improve where we can. We find it's, it's getting better every year as we work with it and we learn and our distribution this year went great with the new sixth graders. Nathan actually got to be a part of that. He, Brooke and Jody Peyton from the middle school came and helped us and it went very well. And like I said, we just, we learn as we go. The first year, I would not say that it went well. It was a lot of people and a lot of Chromebooks and, but we learned. And then, you know, what's always next with our department is just to continue to try to provide the best service and support for the staff and students here in Mount Pleasant. That is my report. Do you have any questions?
I have a question that may not be accepted for you, but the bus and the new cars that you're using, how's that going?
I haven't done much with it other than help provide guidance and information, but it ever reported or administered to me, it sounds like it's going very well.
I know the higher up to these two high schoolers really like it.
It definitely is going well. I mean, any program like this, there's some learning curves and it's taken a little bit longer to load students. You know, we're just kind of getting used to it, but I've been told that the elementary students really like having that on their backpack and then just, they have real, you know, they're just like slip phone in there and stuff. So we're learning a lot, but we've already had situations in our community where we needed to help find students and we were able to verify that they did or didn't get on the bus and so it really is, has already served its purpose. So, but just like all the things that Joel's reporting on, we'll continue to learn and improve over time.
And we have, I've made that system now with Power School as well, so that new students come into their system every night so they're there in the morning so she can prepare them for their outfits and that seems to have worked very well.
Question for clarity. So this bus system that you're talking about, along with Final Forms and Thrill Share, talk to Power School?
So Final Forms is where the information gets entered. And then Final Forms gets that information over to Power School and from there, Power School distributes out to our library system, our lunch system, the bus system. So Final Forms is where it's entered, Power School is where it's held and then Power School distributes it.
Everybody talks every night.
Every night.
Every night.
Sometimes live.
And then I also wanted to point out, you were talking about the experience of the staff and it's very interesting to have that all up, a hundred and three years.
That's pretty family every day.
I was just curious, what did Ganyar do to get a hundred percent participation? That's amazing.
Mrs. Spelt was very persistent this year. Is that what, she followed up with every family that, that didn't turn them in and made sure that they did before school started. And we did do one thing this year a little bit different. We offered an incentive program. We gave away some prizes to the families that had it all completed by the start of school and it turned out that one of the Ganyar students won a Chromebook for it, so they thought that was pretty cool.
I was trying to think of an incentive for if you bring your Chromebook, you know, if it doesn't have to be repaired, could there be something for that as well? But I also just wondered, this is, excuse me, this is the ignorant question about, how does Oasis fit into this as far as updates maybe for the bottom?
They're included, so we updated Oasis and received updates about three years ago and they did, we did some smaller updates with the digital displays this year. The one-to-one Chromebook started for them last year, that was new. And so they are, and some of their stuff is different. They're moving to some new testing software and things like that, so we'll do things a little bit differently there. We did Final Forms on kind of a hybrid. We did, last year they did some, I did some, and now we have fully the Final Forms this year and yeah, they're included in all projects.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. It's phenomenal to see how much progress we've made, especially with the one-to-one Chromebook program. It's great to see it and I think we are very lucky as a district to have these resources and we're very lucky to have you. So thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. All right, we'll move into our policy review and I apologize for the confusion regarding our policy review process. So if you recall, back in July, we received an update from Truman where they made changes to several policies. Some were based on changes in the state law that we need to be compliant with. Other changes were based on just kind of their realization that perhaps things could be streamlined and things could be more consistent. You know, as, I think this is their fifth year in the policy writing business, so obviously just like we talked about, policies live in the briefing, you know, they want to make sure that it's updated. So I apologize for the confusion in that I feel like we've done some work and then they did some work and maybe it's now reflected together. My hope was this evening, we could go through the two thousand and the three thousand series of policy with their updates and I know that we may have our own updates and we have that, we have addressed, but I wanted to make sure that we have agreement or our questions answered in regards to their proposed policy changes and then take it from there. That makes sense. And then we still have the four thousands and the five thousands that they suggested changes for and then we still have our changes as well. And it's all going to come together as one great, perfect product at some point in the near future.
Can you ask a quick question?
Yes.
So when they provided some of the revised content, there was kind of like crossed out a new language. So are these policies, have some of the old answers, do they like that, like just they don't look that way?
Yes, so what you have this evening is the new version of the policy. I'm going to go through them and point out where changes were made so that we have an idea of that. Typically, what we would do is we review these policies twice and then we ask you to approve them. So there's no, or rules for any policies this evening. We're just reviewing them to show where Truman has proposed changes. And I know that there are policies in here that we have changes that we've already discussed that aren't reflected here, but I started to merge the two processes together so we can get everything. That makes sense? So I think the biggest change that applies to all of this series of policies and is in several of them is that Truman has changed fundamental definition. And that is where they have gone from multiple places in policies where they say parent slash guardian and they are using the capitalized term parent. And it's defined in policy fourteen oh one as a student's natural or adoptive parent or legal guardian. So they're, what they're doing through these policies, I don't point out several places as we go through them this evening, they're removing the parent slash guardian and replacing that with the capital, capitalized parent. That then reflects, that refers directly back to their definition that again is in policy fourteen oh one, where they define parent as a student's natural or adoptive parent or legal guardian. So I know we've talked about this before where, you know, often we don't read policy from start to finish, right? When we have a question about something, we go in and fortunately we have a search mechanism, so we search for a topic or a particular word. So I know that that could, could be confusing. My recommendation is that we take that change largely because it's all over the policies and so for us to go back through it, try to find every place that they put in capitalized parent and move to a parent slash guardian, I think that can make us more confusing in the long run. But then we can always just highlight policy fourteen oh one and its definitions, which we know we have several places in our policy where we reference back to that section because that does include the fundamental definitions that apply to all of our policies. That's sort of the big, kind of the big change to do, question.
Comment mark. So fourteen oh one, can that be revised? I doubt, I have concerns with the word natural.
Okay.
I like biological better.
Okay. Maybe we could both? Is it by law, never to turn here today?
Right, if it's by law, if it's not by law.
If it's by law, the legal, biological and natural or, I would guess that we can, just maybe we could do other changes. So if we, if we go under the, kind of the hope that we'd be able to make that adjustment to the definition in fourteen oh one, you'll see as we go through the series of one, we have to see that multiple places where it's. So are you okay, ready to sort of walk through what we have and then? Okay. So we'll start with policy twenty-two oh one, which is under the twenty-two hundred series of four powers. Twenty-two oh one is four powers and general powers. And where we're looking at the change there is in A four and that is the second sentence, that's in addition, where so the board may defend and identifies employees and board members to the extent authorized by law. The indemnification clause is the new clause that was added there.
So as we go through, what I can do is I went through and looked at which ones we already, we had in mind and then we can try to merge. So my hope is that we can, it gets tricky. So that we can add our changes that we recommended back at the time and when we accept it as a pool, that does indicate Truman has to give you that.
Right, that would be my plan, that every this evening, we can take their changes and our changes and bring my stuff.
And so we have some changes on that one that suggested back then, they were minor and, but we did have a few things. The most notable one is to add a therapist under, hold on, A, and then again? Put it on the table.
So really would it make sense if you have a lot of the policies that we have proposed changes? I have proposed activities as well, so you could just, just say, okay, let's remember, we need to check. I have proposed documents as well, so you could just say, okay, let's remember, we need to actually plan that one.
I can do that.
And in that way, we can, so I think we all agree to the other changes.
We did.
So then that way we can just do it, like, does that make sense? In that way, just kind of give you the notch that you don't have to check this policy?
Yes, and I have that, that's actually what it would do.
So we could, I'll check for changes on 2201?
Yes.
2203, the averting of dumb children, again, is just the changes for removing guardian. And so that is in... So we're looking at... 2203, D1 and D2. See a reference to parents on this, the third sentence in B. This is possibly a change as well.
Yeah, that was of all the ones we're going to look at tonight, that was the one with the clothes and shoes, and it would be shoes. And so that was one of the ones that we spent quite a bit of time on.
2302, under section A7 and 10, there are two references there to parents. Again, as I described earlier.
Same thing, we had some changes, but it was small. There's not nothing too big. Now, I'm just curious, so when we were working with a prior company that was providing policies, when they had changes, they provided us maybe with, you know, that if it, like, the changes will always be like that? Is that something true?
No, we can do that. I can give that version for them, so that they can see that. I can provide that if that would be better.
It would have helped me, I know, looking through, especially those that we've had before, to figure out what was the little tiny discernment which, so if you have those policies presented, you'll see.
2314, section B1. This is looking at violation of Board Member Code of Ethics. The publicly center a board member which may include adopting a formal board resolution recommending the board behavior. That's in addition, the action may include adopting a formal board resolution of that.
This one had no changes.
Policy 2401, Board Member Elections. The second sentence says to newly added, at least one board office must be under valid for each regular election of the district. Over two years, there must be at least one board member office under valid. That's our elections.
We had no changes on that one either.
2405, under section D2. What they did for D2 and D3 previously, Vice President, Secretary, or Treasurer, if they reference all three of those offices in one statement. This broke them out, so that if the Office of Vice President or Secretary becomes vacant, the Board must promptly elect a board member to fill that vacancy. And then a separate item number three now, if the Office of Treasurer becomes vacant, the Board must promptly elect a board member, so that vacancy if first elected or appointed will serve the Office for the balance of that Office's term. So I think that's how courts that have different lengths of terms for different positions, so it really doesn't need to apply to us to be the same length of terms for different positions.
We had no comments on that one.
2501, Board Meetings and Board Meeting Compliance Act. To look at A5, they've added in the statement in the event of a severe and imminent threat to the safety or welfare of the public, that we can, that we can change a board meeting should there be a severe and imminent threat to the health or safety.
So this one was one of the ones tonight that was new to us, so we had not reviewed this altogether. And so we have a few comments in it here.
Okay, great.
Actually, there's only one, it was mine and Katie. At the very end of the policy, I think the second line, they talked about it wouldn't be able to go on recess. That was new to me, and so I was wondering if you, we could talk about it?
Yeah, so I actually just, there's two more changes to the policy, and that is one of the additions. So in under G3, they did say, "Reconvening minutes will comply with the older meeting act." Now it says meeting minutes must comply with the older meeting act. And then paragraph I is added. That a board meeting may be recessed. A board meeting that is recessed for more than 36 hours can only be reconvened once the notice requirements for the meeting, as described in this policy, has been satisfied. If we're in special meeting or we schedule regular meeting notice if applicable. So we know that we have to post our meetings within 18 hours prior to the meeting. So what that's saying is that if a board meeting is recessed for more than 36 hours, then we have to make sure that we post that meeting at least for 18 hours prior to the meeting.
Can you tell me a little more recesses? Is it just one of the, I guess I just didn't know.
So I believe we are able to recess a board meeting after, based on time, based on circumstances. Typically, when you recess, you would come back together quickly. So you might recess because, I don't know, that the board meeting goes until midnight, you recess, and you agree to reconvene the next morning.
This is a pause.
It's a pause in the meeting, it's not a cancellation. You're pausing the meeting, and you can leave that number. But if you're pausing for more than 36 hours, then you have to mention the meeting has posted for 18 hours, posted online, posted on Google.
Do you have another one?
That, in my, that's the best I have.
Thank you.
Policy 2504, Public Participation and Board Meetings, B1. Previously, the policy said member of the public will state his or her name, and they change that from out to there. That's the only change in that policy.
So that's also a new policy to us, and Katie, you had a question?
Yeah, I noticed that, you know, it says we'll post it, and we do have it over there. So I was just wondering, is it appropriate during our meeting to refer to that? You know, for a public comment, we kind of remind them a few of those, but that is kind of a robust list, and I didn't know if that's helpful to the public, just to kind of view. So I didn't know to read this list. Well, just the rules list, you know, if you're doing public comment, it can be scary. You know, I don't think people are trying to break rules, but they might not be aware of what they are. I hope we highlighted a few. So my question is just, could we just refer, when we get to that point of, we have public comment, do you have those guidelines posted, if you have any questions about that? Or so, we got, you know, read them all? Because I just, I'm not sure, you know, I don't think they're read down, but if they're valuable, I think I'm going.
Are there any comments on this policy? So policy 3102, Smoking Tobacco and Unstructured Alcohol. Under A3, they've added the phrase, "Continue nicotine from any source." I know that this is a policy that we had, so we think there's more to discuss. And I know they're not reflected in this document here. That is the addition there, "Continue nicotine from any source."
So unchecked, because I felt like we read the two, but it was actually a different policy. It was on there, I had it, 4210 is what we've got. So this one was also new to us. But I figured we could ask for all the changes in language to reflect cultural uses of tobacco in our community. That whatever they agree in 4210 that we apply to this one. Thank you.
Are there other questions about this policy? 3104, Public Cameras and Monitoring. And again, this is a spot under C, where it says video recording of parent and student beings. They change the parent slash guardian to parent with capitalized.
So this is a new policy to us, and we don't have any questions or changes suggested. But I'm not sure how many of us go to it.
Sure, so that might be good to point that out, just as a second meeting.
Policy 3105, Visitors and Volunteers. Again, there are multiple places where they've changed the parent slash guardian to parents. In the first sentence, also in A4. And then on, under Volunteers, B, I'm sorry, under Volunteers, B4D. They've added the phrase, "Through a vehicle's lawful registration or con murals." So we do not have Volunteer Drivers. This was an early to us, right?
Yes, that was new to us, and A10, you had a question?
So my question with this one is, involved in sports and clubs, are those considered during the school day? Or is it different, is it somehow not associated? How does that work, just because we do often know that school parents might hurt people and run other children and things like that?
So if it's during the school day, where we're trying to get our families to go with either school band, or school bus, or a charter bus that we're renting, I know weekend transportation is a little bit different, where families need a carpool. But for an event during the school day, we're trying to always have it be our staff, the coach, the assistant coach that's driving in those places. Thank you. Next one is 3106, Booster Clubs, BTO, and Other Support Groups. And again, this is looking at the mercuriants, which in the first paragraph, under B1, that it working to clarify the definition of who would be, what would be considered an internal support group. And then they have that change here, so they add additional language in B1.
There was, this is new to us, and there was no questions or comments?
3107 is Use of Detection Dogs, under AC. Again, that's the parent guardian, remove the guardian piece. That's the only change on that policy.
So no questions or changes on this one either?
3108, Service Animals. Under, under section F, under Control of the Service Animals. Their clarification is that the service animal must be under the control of the handler at all times. That was down, including in the previous policy. Double that in section G, and again, in section I, they've made the clarification of the parent slash guardian. But the big change is in section F, that the service animal must be under the handler's control at all times.
There was no questions or comments or changes on this one either?
3116 is District of Algae and Acceptable Use. And under section D, there's three bulleted points there. The second two bulleted points, each had the parent slash guardian, and that's been replaced with the capitalized parent, and it's made the definition. And then we go on through the policy under E, Public Access to Technology, under item one. And item two, there is another reference to, you know, if we use the parent slash guardian, and now it's the capitalized parent.
So this is also new to us, and we had, there's a number of questions or comments. Some of them are mine, I can start. I wonder, this statement, one, AC, and I can read it. I wonder if you could either remove, or if it's by law, if you can modify the statements? I can read it out loud right now. It's saying that the board complies with the Children's Parent Protection Act, and there are administrators to, I'm sorry, no, wait, wrong section. It's what we define as harmful to minors with content online. And the C statement says if it's, if the content is taken as a whole, lacks serious literacy, artistic, political, or scientific value for minors. So I felt like that was opening up, that's up to a high level of interpretation. And I'm not sure what they are after, the paragraphs before describe clearly what they are after in terms of content, which makes perfect sense. And this one was the one that felt a little bit of, really vague. And so I'm guessing there's a reason it's there. And I don't know how we can maybe add to the, if we need to have it, that we add, and try to remove some of that fluff, or not fluff, but vague aspect of it a little bit.
So perhaps first I should find out if it's a legal requirement that we have that sent to us? And then if it is, we can come back and discuss how we really want to change it, and if it, if it aren't even better.
It is the wood value that we, it doesn't have serious value. I don't know how we decide what has serious value.
Scientific value?
Yeah, scientific value, wooden value, artistic value.
We're going over these tonight, we don't necessarily have to approve them tonight, but prior to. Because it references the Children's Parent Protection Act. And my guess is because it's bulletproof under there, that if we take a look at that, that's going to outline the language that follows, and I'd like to look at it to see.
Same.
Is there a better way to, or that's just how it's written, which?
I think it's how it's written so good, that maybe we can add a little bit to say, well, you know, we understand that we can find out differently as individuals. And so that was one. Katie, I think you had some as well?
Yeah, and again, these could be just how it needs to be, but there was A1, four, and seven. Quite redundant. Four says appropriate access by minors to inappropriate matter on the internet. And then seven says restrict minors' access to materials that are inappropriate for minors. Maybe I'm missing something, but I kept reading it different ways, and it felt a little bit similar.
Yeah, I do.
There's a lot of words here, I just feel like if there's some extras, we could, it'll be good. The other thing just was, how do we handle this policy for students who are 18? Because it talked about minors throughout, and it also does talk about adults. There were some differences there, and I think that's a little bit tricky water, but I just wasn't sure if there's anything to just protect us, protect them, that might need to be there somehow?
So I believe for our policies, a student is a student, and I'm going to go with that even as soon as 18, they're still subject to our policies as a minor student, right?
And even Google now has certain restrictions on students 18 and above and 18 and below on what we can provide access to, and we have to make sure that we are accepting the regulations that they have for students under 18. And so, but we apply that to everyone.
I just kept saying minors, so I was just thinking of students coming up with loopholes. Just wondering, thank you.
Can I comment on the four and seven? If you look at it, four is internet specific. So my guess is for online intangible things. Seven is materials in general. So I wonder if that's something that's been appreciated here?
I had one on the same policy. So under B, Acceptable Use Agreement. I wonder if this was new to us, that we have a statement that says, the acceptable use agreement that must be signed if the user is required access? I'm pretty sure I remember our student signed it. And then there's a new bullet point now, that's four members as well. So I don't remember signing it, so maybe I did. So I don't remember signing it, so maybe I did. So I didn't know if this was new, or if we did this already, and I just don't remember.
I didn't know that we had board members signing any before. We certainly can. Definitely all employees and volunteers did that for, did that for the board members. Other items to this policy?
Yeah, was it?
Yeah. Okay, well, that's a policy, is policy thirty-one eighteen, that information incumbent in partners for the district. In our previous policy, this was a very lengthy policy that outlined that all of the requirements under title nine, I should know about all those requirements in August. And so this literally was a multi-page policy that was just replaced with that paragraph because we already have the thirty-one fifteen series that meets all of the other requirements for technical. So this, this policy definitely.
Yeah, that one is new to us, and we have no comments.
Next policy is thirty-one nineteen, experimental or pilot programs. And this is my favorite update because they only updated the legal citation. So it was, under legal authorities, it says MCL three zero point one one A, MCL four two three point two one five, parentheses three, parentheses G. And the previous policy realized parentheses was a H. And this was a G. Do you have any questions about this policy?
I don't have any, lots of comments. I did wonder how often in our district do we have a pilot program?
Well, the best example of a pilot program that we have right now is with the program Ad Voices. We were able to establish a memory of understanding, knowing that as we grow and develop that program, there'll be some changes. So we have about eighteen months to sort of figure out how the program moving forward, and then we'll fully negotiate it. So pilot programs are by two nights, and our means of agreement with the models and education.
Thank you.
Policy thirty-two oh seven. And again, that's another update to the legal citation.
This one was not new to us, and we had no changes we had suggested by them.
Policy thirty-two eleven, post issuance tax compliance. And the change in that is in the very last section, under H, training and education. The district will provide training for a debt compliance officer. The debt compliance officer will complete the training at least annually, prior to debt payment is not.
He has some small changes we need back in February, so suggested it was small.
Thirty-three oh one, purchasing and procurement. Under A, the responsibility for purchasing. They reference back to policy twenty-two oh two, subsection C. And then the other criteria is established by the board. So that is just connecting it back to the policy that remains. So there's two policies that both govern purchasing.
We have no suggested changes when we read this one.
Gee, I'm sorry.
I, we said the MGE, so there's one small change.
Oh, and B one?
M, MGE, oh, no, that wasn't it. M, MGE. We did it differently. So yes, small changes.
Just write that out. And the policy thirty-three oh three, there's a change to remove guardian in the first paragraph, the last sentence. It says, parent support groups, because it said parent slash guardian support groups.
No changes in that.
Policy thirty-three oh six, construction bidding. This change is under A, I'm sorry, B five. And then what it does is it includes information regarding the state prevailing wage requirements. There have been some legal requirements saying that we, that we may fall under state prevailing wage for variety of different reasons. So that's referenced in B five.
When we reviewed this one, we had some small changes.
Thirty-three oh seven, construction administration. This is another section regarding the prevailing wage requirements. And that is section D, book one into our new statements in this policy. They're referencing state and federal law regarding the prevailing wage requirements.
May no changes in that.
Policy thirty-four oh two, drills, plans, and reports. There's two sections that are new, first under B, that wraps up the guardian emergency response plan. And you all know from the work of Deb Agnew last year that we've implemented, it's developed and implemented, a guardian emergency response plan is required by law. We're actually ahead of that, because it's not required until next year. And then the other piece is the drinking water management thing, section C. And that needs to be, it was for January twenty twenty-five, and we've had that in place for several years. Planning, under section F, there's another spot where they change parent slash guardian to just parents.
Had some small changes suggested by them.
Policy thirty-four oh three, reporting accidents. Just one small change, removing the parent slash guardian to just parents in the last sentence.
And no changes by them.
Policy thirty-four oh six, integrated pest management. Under section B one and two, there are two spots where they remove guardian and just use the capitalized parents.
Were no changes by them?
Policy thirty-four oh eight, firearms and weapons. Under B two, is the change of parent slash guardian. And under B one, there is a legal reference as to how and where a police officer is defined under FCL twenty-eight point four two five zero five.
We had no changes suggested by them.
Policy thirty-four ten, opioid antagonists. Under B two, again, there's a change where they do guardian under parent slash guardian.
This one was new to us today, and we had no comments or questions on it.
I don't think this policy is actually new because we did approve this separately. Um, so it's probably on the table. We have reviewed this a couple of different times, and we approved this separately just because, you know, Deb was such a forward thinker as far as the parenting techniques.
Look everywhere I can, just one of this. Okay, where is it? So yeah, not that much more sense.
And then the last policy, thirty-five oh one, which is Freedom of Information Act of Teachers and Guidelines. And given where we are with policies being, I can tell you that this policy is almost completely revised and a lot has changed with it, largely because there's been so many changes to the legal requirements of the Freedom of Information Act. So previously, this policy was written with forms interjected amongst the policy. They've separated that out. But I don't know, it would make a lot of sense to approve to compare what's different, what's the same. I think probably it makes more sense to review this policy as, can we accept this policy as it is? Or are there changes that we need to make on this policy, knowing that the majority of it is based solely on, you know, what's required by law or regulation?
And at the time, we had no changes suggested.
But I, I would say of any policy that we looked at this evening, aside from Title I, we already did, this property has some changes. Are there any overall questions regarding all of these policies? Again, I apologize for the confusion, and I will make sure that things are more clear for our next look at them. And I will make sure that we incorporate the changes that we proposed into that. But I would like to get, so the difference would be with all of these policies that we reviewed tonight, whether there are changes or not, whether we agree with what Trin has proposed or not. We do have to actually approve all of these policies in order for anything that's discussed to be in the other day.
Can we request? Because I know initially there was feedback, like, here's the language, yeah, this is approved, like, that feedback per comment or per piece of input that we have. Can we request that forward as well?
Thank you, and that's all.
So maybe through policies, I don't know how we can help, right? Make that process, what's your condition there, not. I mean, first, I guess I'll back up and say, I mean, credit me for the work we do. I know it's not, I know it's too essential for our audience to hear. But going through policies this Monday, I mean, it wasn't very, very bright for us. But I also know that we backed up significantly. And so I don't know how we help catch up in a way. So I, I mean, I asked the question, and I don't, I don't think we've had a single policy that we've suggested changes where we've approved yet. I agree with.
We have, we just haven't in several months. So we, we, I feel like I did a much better job of keeping up last fall through the winter, and then I think second part of the winter into the spring, I did not do a great job of keeping up. So there have been policies where we've suggested changes, Trin's approved the changes, and we approved those policies. Or we suggested changes, Trin said we can't change them for reason X, Y, Z, and then we said we could live with that. And so, so, but I agree, I, I'm definitely behind in getting us to where we need to be. So I can make that a priority and get us moving forward so that it doesn't feel quite so overwhelming as of this right now. Yep.
I appreciate it. All right. That moves us into our requested financial reports.
And we, and that view is policy financial reports for general funds, special service funds, regulations, manager comparison of our budgets, actual positions for a five-year look for the month of August of this year, twenty twenty twenty-one, for the question for. Versus general fund, it's, we have already, our, our culture. See, the expenditure's gone up over the years, and it's been more. The expenditures are higher in the data years. For special service funds, we can't, we can't, we're all good with this, because that's the nature of these funds. I will say that it's, by the end of the year, there's a, it's not the same as sports, and there was a big combination that year to some of them. For the members report for general fund, on July thirty-first, we have cash accounts of two million dollars. Income in August of four million dollars, and this person's assistance point two. That brings us to the also, that's the first assignment. For the debt repayment funds, on July thirty-first, we have two hundred and six thousand. If a small army is given twenty hours, you know, it's person to the home office. That brings us to the also, that's the first two hundred and sixty. For tech project funds, on July thirty-first, we have two hundred and six thousand. We have receipts of the home keeping by the house, and the home office, the home discretion. It's exactly. Because we definitely have projects that, and they could just be a side duty when the money was transferred out of the tech project fund, paid to general fund, to the owners. But I'm sure it's, it's a lot, but all of it. But it also obviously requires some, I think, some.
Question? It moves us to our correspondence. We have not received, we have not received any correspondence since our last board meeting, which brings us to a citizens' request to address the board on any agenda, management items. We wanted to remind everybody that you're given three minutes to talk to the board, and it is not a two with three. We cannot answer questions or engage in any ways, however, we can order away listening. We take notes, and we DP value, we communicate with that every seat here. We have a few speakers today, and our first person is Derek.
Good evening, thank you. Just want to introduce myself. My name is Perry Snider. I'm running for school board. I currently have three children. They're going through school here and promising to be a great opportunity to serve. What they're doing and what you're doing alongside you is our superintendent, our staff, and our students. Looking around my entire life and been through this school many times. I currently serve utility trades. And just helpful to be in my day point here someday, and how they do. And I'm hopeful to consider in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Next, we have Christina.
Hello, I'm Christina Habe. I am also running for school board, and so my goal coming tonight was just to, first and foremost, recognize that this is like a rigorous job, but it's hours and hours of time commitment. And so in the world of election, it's really difficult to keep that activity out of all of the discussions that I will be forthcoming, that is definitely present. But I wanted to go forth and say that I watched all the school board meetings this year. I've attended multiple, and professionalism that has changed over the last couple of years is really astronomical, but it's pleasant to see that. But a little bit about me, I am a local community member. I have a sixteen-year-old junior here at the high school who is active in sports, in ski and golf, and hopefully to cross-country. He's only next year, so he will at the sport for his senior year. And then I have a special new autistic child that is a sixth grader at the middle school, and he is currently doing cross-country. So that's his life right now. I myself graduated from Alma High School. I attended Alma College for my bachelor's degree. I was in my high school, my older child gets sick, so I came back and did associate degree in nursing through Michigan Community College. And then furthered out my bachelor's of nursing, my master's in nursing, and my doctor of nursing, who have been driving universities looking at Washington, working with several populations. And then I worked for Michigan Health for twenty-four years. I started as a co-op student at the age of fourteen, and have continued to work there in the past as a critical care and nurse practitioner. So I am a firm believer, that's how the best leaders are, those that are common in the community, and revise the guidelines, and you cannot complain about something unless you're ready to be part of that. Change yourself, that's why. Yours is a big help.
Thank you, Christina. And last, we have Madison Chapman.
Good evening. I am also here to share that I am running for school board this November, and I have been joining a good number of the school board meetings recently. I had the opportunity to join the strategic planning meeting. And I am really excited about the goals and plans that the community members, the staff, and the board came up with. I believe I could meaningfully add value in helping the district reach some of those goals. A little bit about me, I'm a licensed psychologist. I have my PhD in school psychology for Michigan State University. I also went to CMU for my undergrad. I am the owner of Pleasant Psychology here in town, a child-focused mental health practice. And I served as the lead clinical psychologist at Community Mental Health for Central Michigan. And similar to what Christina and Derek shared, I also wanted to share thanks and appreciation for all of you in joining this board meetings lately. The thing that stood out the most to me, and in the strategic planning, is how genuinely you all share appreciation for the staff, families, community partners. That is very clearly the priority in all of your communication. So I just wanted to say appreciation for your appreciation of the community. So thank you.
This concludes our citizen's question, goes to the board, and moves us into our consent agenda. First, I feel in our consent agenda is the approval of the minutes of the August nineteen twenty twenty-four. But here they're. So moved. Second, all in favor? Aye, and opposed? And you? We also have to approve the bills for the month. We have a motion to approve the bills.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And clearly. We have a couple items under new business. The first one is an activity account request on the N P M S robotics and tech.
We actually have three account, uh, new activity requests. There's one, so we, we have one, I have one that's ready. So first, it feels to me therefore the municipal robotics program. As you know, we're working really hard to create robotics programs at all levels. So Zekloris is agreed to be our municipal robotics advisor. So we need a place to deposit funds for that group. The second, uh, activity account request is for TECA. TECA is a marketing association. I'm sure it's an acronym, and I don't know what TECA stands for, but. Just, okay, so along the lines of the P P A, I, I, I acknowledge, but along the lines of P P A was strictly focused on marketing. So another great student organization that we're referred to be able to offer. And then finally, the last one is for our performing arts center. We have officially hired John Quack, as maybe be familiar to some of you, as a performing arts center manager. And so we need a place to deposit those funds that we will bring in as we rent the facility. Those funds will be used to invest back into the facility for play balls, replacement things, staff that we need over time. So we're asking the group to post three activity accounts this evening.
I, I think it's super exciting that we are having, adding a little school robotics team. I think it's probably inspired partly by how great our high school team has been performing and the energy they've had. And so big thank you to Zach for taking that out, and it's a big job. I remember during our listening sessions we ran at the little school, the kids were asking for this, and so I think they'll be really excited.
I have a motion to accept all three activity account requests.
Make a motion that we accept all three activity account requests. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Clearly.
I have a question upon the, do we now have municipal robotic competitions at the high schools?
I, I believe that they do. Yeah, I, 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 it's, it's, it's all sort of different levels. So I will also just plug in that we do have elementary robotics teams forming as well. Those teams are Lego teams. So right now, Bowles has an established Lego team. And then they are working with the other four elementary buildings to get those teams established. I spent some time cleaning up my basement and made a large Lego donation to, to the team. So at every level, there, there are different activities that they need to, and they do compete at every level. So it may not be, you know, as often, and they may not travel. Our high school team, I know, had competitions with the U P last year. I wouldn't guess that the younger students would travel like that, but there's still other competitions like that. So it definitely is a, um, a growing, extra popular activity, and I'm happy that it's supported as well. Then I say on your list, we do have a donation. Our automotive program has received a hit by donation from Grateful Four. It is a two thousand eighteen Ford Escape, and so they'll be able to use that vehicle in their lap. You know, in terms of the donation is that when we go already, it would not be resolved, but it would be used as a learning tool in that.
We have a motion to accept the donation by Crapwell.
Crapwell?
Grateful Four.
Grateful Four, sorry.
So.
Second?
All in favor? And opposed?
Thank you very much. And then the last item on the agenda this evening, on your list, is the name change for Oasis. We use our program in the state of Michigan, it's called the Education Entity Master. And Kevin is actually our Education Entity Master. So Kevin puts all the information in there, the program Oasis, in that if the E A is currently formally recognized as the Way Oasis program, since we no longer have a contract in our relationship with this way, we do need to officially remove Way from the name of that program. So we're asking this evening that you formally approve the name change from Way Oasis to simply Oasis.
We have a motion to accept the name change.
Can I ask a question first? Is it one word? Is it simply Oasis or two words?
It, it's Oasis. Just one, just one word Oasis. Not since it always, it's just Oasis.
Make a motion that we accept the name change. From Way Oasis to Oasis.
All in favor? And opposed?
And clearly, thank you.
And that brings us to our Board of Education discussion this evening.
Yes, I was at the football game on the sixth, I believe. The big A coach managed to shout out for his one hundred and fiftieth career football win for the university. That was super cool, and, you know, he's a humble guy, probably won't mention it, but I thought that was neat. And then also to the Golden Apple Award winner, Caleb House from Upford High School. Congratulations, both of you.
I have a couple items, uh, you think that I wanted to bring up? The first one is addressing group here, Sex and Advisory Board. I know they've been really busy creating bylaws over the last, last month. And that was a big undertaking that we are, we were very happy to review it. And seeing, I know the initial, well. We had an initial curriculum recommendation that I think was on the Sunset curriculum. And so we had asked the Sex and Advisory Board to revisit that recommendation and then make a new one. And I was hoping that we could get this recommendation this trimester. I'm thinking in part of the time it takes to train and implement, so that we can have it ready and then kind of bring that back up to the group. And so Linda, I know you sit on that board, and so I just, I didn't know if anybody wanted to comment. But that was something I wanted to make sure we had a chance to discuss if we still.
When is the end of the first trimester?
It is right before Thanksgiving, whatever that, Tuesday, twenty-somethings.
Linda's sincere on that, do you think that's a reasonable timeline? Or do we go back to the drawing board, or we revisit ones we've looked at, or we?
I think we should probably revisit some of the looked at, and consider, you know, the options are, are there. Our current programs will be created for hundred years. And they have, it does have a new online modules that we're giving probably intensely. We did hear from a couple other organizations that have presentations, but we honestly gotta talk about it. Unfortunately, that would be a top priority in the process to get down there. We have a little time, because traditionally that is the, the period under usually that is often tied with our trimester. But it really should be a huge role for us.
That was really my intention, I just to bring that back up to the surface, while respecting your work ethic. That was important that we asked for, despite our process, industry, and I, this is, well, the work that was done, the membership and voting. And so I don't want to take away from that. But I'm also hoping to go back to that discussion on curriculum, I'm sure, by the end of the year.
I think that makes sense. The first try deadline, then whatever the new thing is, staff will have to be able to review it before possibly teaching it in the third try, or keeping to that timeframe in that logical sense to me.
Well, my, my hope is that we have a recommendation to the board within that first trimester, whatever that is. And so that we can, that second trimester is critically reviewed.
Often be very unique with the committee meeting.
We have first ones and then advisor board meeting in November and November. We kind of left it at that, and depending on our needs to go into the next year, we'll see.
Is that something that, say, hey, like that recommendation, is that something you could go back? Just see if it's feasible, you know, within that timeline and?
Yeah, and we can usually work together to create the agendas or try to, so. I do, I think we all want to circle back to that, on this.
Thank you. The second item is to bring traffic to attention, the upcoming grades and grades events. And the tickets are online now and available already. It's on October seventeenth at six P M. And it is the main fundraising event of our educational foundation for our district. About that formed a lot of projects in our district. Is it free?
May I move on? I just always like to vocalize that when community members come and share and participate in the meeting, that's greatly appreciated.
There's nothing else, this is just our meetings, thank you, everybody.